Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I see Pastor Fair in the audience. I also see Pastor Miller, so first one to the podium is to lead us into prayer, but I see Pastor Fair. So we appreciate you, good to see you, and we'll let you lead us in our prayer. And Pastor, right into the prayer, we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you be with me? God, we do thank you so much for today and just the blessings of life that you've given each and every one of us. And God, just for the ability to be here tonight. God, I pray for this city council and mayor. God, I pray that you would just continue to give them wisdom and vision for the future. I'm thankful for everyone that's here in attendance. God, ask a special blessing upon each and every person. And God, we just ask that you bless our town here in Northport, God, to lead in your direction. God, we ask all this now in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united by, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rose, call roll please.
Councilman Hambride.
Here.
President Logan.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Hogg.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. The Honorable Mayor Donna Erin has some presentations for us.
The first thing that I'm so happy to be able to do is to swear in a new police officer with the City of Northport. It has been a while, but it is certainly a great honor for me, and I see that he has some reinforcements here with him. Chris, if you would please repeat after me. I, Chris Love,
I, Chris Love.
Do hereby solemnly swear,
Do hereby solemnly swear,
To uphold the Constitution,
To uphold the Constitution,
And laws of the United States of America,
Of laws of the United States of America,
The state of Alabama,
The state of Alabama,
And the city of Northport,
And the city of Northport,
And that I will faithfully and honestly,
That I will faithfully and honestly,
Discharge my duties,
Discharge my duties,
As a police officer for the city of Northport,
As a police officer for the city of Northport.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and so fast as it is with your badge.
Thank you ma'am.
We're looking forward to your coming on board and it's coming up.
It's an honor to be here, thank you.
And our next proclamation is Mr. Turner. Whereas the freedom and security that citizens of the United States enjoy today are direct results of the sacrifices given by the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation. And whereas for many, these sacrifices have ended in permanent injury or death, yet their spirit remains in the continued preservation of our freedoms. And whereas the United States Congress designated National Military Appreciation Month to honor, recognize, and appreciate our servicemen and women who are currently serving and those who have served throughout our history. And whereas National Military Appreciation Month calls all Americans to remember those who gave their lives in defense of freedom and to honor the men and women of our armed services together with their families. And whereas the month of May was selected for this display of patriotism because during the month we celebrate Loyalty Day, which is today, May 1st, the E-Day, May the 8th, Military Spouse Appreciation Day, May the 12th, Armed Forces Day, May the 20th, and Memorial Day, May the 29th. Now therefore, our Donna Erin, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Northport, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 to be National Military Appreciation Month. In the city of Northport and to encourage all citizens to join me in showing our gratitude to those who have served throughout our history, those who are currently serving, and those who have given their lives in defense of our freedom that we enjoy today.
Thank you ma'am.
And we also have one on our council who is serving in the military even today. Councilman Davis.
Thank you, thank you ma'am.
Mayor Erin and council members, I didn't mean to turn the back on you, I'm just gonna talk to the crowd here. I appreciate your taking the time to issue this proclamation honoring National Military Appreciation Month. It is a time for all of us to think about the sacrifices made by our military and their families. During these trying times, our servicemen and women need to know that all of us are appreciate their role in protecting and defending our nation's freedom during times of peace and especially in times of conflict. This very important month honors, remembers, recognizes, and appreciates all military personnel, those men and women who have served throughout our history, and all who now serve in uniform and their families, especially those Americans who have paid the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our country and our freedom. It recognizes those on active duty in all branches of the service, the National Guard and Reserves, plus retirees, veterans, and all of their families. Well over ninety million Americans and encompasses more than two-hundred-and-thirty years of our nation's history. Let us celebrate and honor them and the sacrifices they have made on behalf of all the Americans past, present, and future. Thank you ma'am, thank you. Item five is approval of the agenda. You had our, is that our pre-meeting, is pretty good information. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Item six is have some visitors to address our council. Fossett Vestavia Elementary and Councilman Sullivan will handle this aspect.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, one of the most often asked questions I get is, why do I do this job? And you're fixing to find out exactly why. As you all know, last week we received a invitation for a surprise visitor to come to address Vestavia. They wouldn't tell us what it was. I tried my hardest to find out what it was before I got there. And to their credit, nobody said a word, even the principal, I see you over there. So when I got there, I had learned that Fossett Vestavia has earned the Lighthouse Leadership Award. They are one of two-hundred-and-eighty-nine, is that correct? Sorry, I'm under the weather tonight. One of two-hundred-and-eighty-nine worldwide. So I had asked the kids to come tonight to kinda give all of us a little presentation of what they did and what they're doing, and just wanted to show how proud I am of all of them. So at this time, I'll turn it over to you. You can pull the chair up when you need to.
Hi, my name is Markie Standridge, and I'm a fourth grader at Fossett Vestavia Elementary School. Fossett Vestavia Elementary recently received the honor of becoming a lighthouse school through Stephen Covey's Leader in Me program. The journey to lighthouse was not easy, but through a lot of hard work and dedication, we became one of two-hundred-and-eighty-nine schools in the entire world. We are privileged to share our celebration with you.
Hi, my name is Emma Meggs, I'm in the fifth grade in Ms. Ritchie's class. Our student lighthouse team is sixteen leaders ranging from second to fifth grade. We make decisions for Red Ribbon Week and Great Kindness Challenge Week. We also give school tours and present on leadership days.
Hi, my name is Shelby Freeman, I'm in fifth grade with Ms. Ritchie. Leader in Me is a program for seven habits of highly affected leaders. It is designed to help students practice their leadership skills for a necessary, successful life in school and outside of school. We do this by hav- having lessons with our, led by our teachers, having leadership binders, and having classroom and school-wide jobs.
Hi, my name is Marley Dollar, I'm in the fifth grade in Ms. Ritchie's class. Every class student at Fossett Vestavia has a classroom job, like paper distributor, and germ fighter, and many other jobs. You can apply for school-wide jobs as further responsibilities. But all, you fill out a piece of paper, and then you give it to your teacher, and if your teacher thinks you're a good leader, you get to go through an interview, and if whoever interviewed you thinks you're a good leader, you get to do the job. Some jobs we have at Fossett Vestavia, so lighthouse team, literacy leaders, safety patrol, and many more. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peyton Nerp, and today I'm going to be teaching you about our school-wide WIGs. Our WIGs are wildly important goals, and we have three major categories as you can see up on the screens. They are reading, behavior, and math. We are hoping to have a hundred percent on all of them by the end of the year. We have gone up, and we are very proud of that. Our reading goal is for everyone to finish their reading log each nine weeks. So far, as you can tell, we have been doing very good on that. And second, we have our behavior. Our behavior goal is for everyone to get on green, purple, or blue each ninety percent of the time, each nine weeks. And green, purple, and blue is just our highest rankings in our behavior. As you can see, we have a tree, a snowman, and a sun. The tree was our first nine weeks' information. The snowman was our second nine weeks, and the sun was our third. If you completed your behavior goal each nine weeks, you had some way of showing it. For example, on the snowman and sun, we have written our names if we have completed our behavior goal. As you can tell, we have had a lot of students complete this, which we are very proud of. And last but not least, we have our math goal. We have gone up on this just a little bit, we are still very proud. We are hoping to mainly work towards this. Our math goal is for everyone to get a ninety percent or better each nine, on each assessment that your teacher has handed out to you. You can get the data for all of these major categories around your teacher's door or around their bulletin board. Thank you.
My name is Allison Dollar, and I'm in kindergarten. My teacher is Ms. McCullough. My club is hand dance. I like it because we get to learn all the new tiers and dances and moves. We do clubs once a month. There's actually some other clubs like Legos, art coloring club, and photography. Thank, thank.
Hi, my name is Nora Claire. And today I'm going to be teaching you about the kindergarten service project. The kindergarten service project is collecting crayons for kids in hospitals who do not have crayons. And, um, the crayon, and, um, where those crayons, how, first they are sent to the crayon initiative that makes them and take new crayons. First they melt, first they melt it down, then they, um, they, they, they put it in a, they shape the crayon, then it dries. Then a wrapper machine puts the wrapper on, and, and they are sent, and they're boxed and sent to kids in hospitals who do not have crayons. Each, each, um, grade has a, a service project. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Morgan Burrell. I am in fifth grade in Ms. Pinions class. And I'm gonna be talking about the garden. The garden is organized through the Drid City Garden Project, and it helps us learn responsibility. A way it helps us learn responsibility is that each grade gets a different bed with a different, with different plants in it. The plants depend on what season it is, and every season when the plants are ripe, we have a farm stand and sell all the plants to people who want them. Right now, we have strawberries, charred radishes, peas, and... potatoes. Thank you for having us. We are so proud of our school. What a great way to begin our fiftieth year anniversary.
Alright, thank you. Look at that first slide. Alright, up there it is, go on, right there, everybody see that lighthouse on the right? That is an actual cake. That thing was about four foot tall. This was presented to them by a family, a couple out of Mississippi, I think, that was on the show Cake Wars, and they came and presented this to all the children last week. It was really neat to see, the light on the top actually worked, it was incredible. They wouldn't let me take it home or bring it here, so. But again, thank you guys so much, so proud of all of you.
Item eight B1 under New Business is a resolution declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing their disposal. Mr. Rose, these are basically items that have reached their useful life and need to be surplussed as required. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
That's a motion by Councilman Hogg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item number two is a resolution appointing a Director of Utilities, Mr. Rose.
Yes, Mr. President, as you are aware, several weeks ago, the council authorized the HR department to do an internal advertisement for the open position of Utilities Director vacated by Mr. Larry Ingram several months ago. And we had one applicant, one internal applicant to apply, and that was Mr. John Powell Webb, and his name is up for consideration for you tonight to vote on.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Mr. John Powell Webb as the Director of Utilities for the City of Northport?
I'll make that motion.
That's a motion by Councilman Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hambride. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item C is our consent agenda. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training, and PO requisitions for various employees for those travels and training opportunities. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
That's a motion by Councilman Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Item nine is reports of special committees to council. We have none to report tonight. Item ten is public hearings. We have none on the agenda. Item eleven, city administrator's business, Mr. Rose.
Yes, Mr. President, as you are all aware, we are in the process of trying to go through the process of obtaining a SRF loan through the state to do some utilities projects. And would like to get a couple of dates from y'all to do a work session to discuss that further as a deadline is soon nearing. Just, if y'all will send me those dates or let me know, and we'll get a work session set up for that.
Alright, thank you. Item twelve, departmental business, Ms. Starnes out of Public Works.
Yes, sir, as you're aware, we're working on the garbage cart implementation system, and we are offering the citizens an opportunity to purchase a pink breast cancer research garbage cart. The cost is seventy-five dollars, and here's the rendering up on the projection screen. The cost is seventy-five dollars per cart, a hundred percent of the proceeds will go to the breast cancer research. And the citizens have an opportunity to purchase up to three garbage carts, and for commercial businesses, it's one. You will be charged based on, your pickup service will be charged monthly based on the amount of carts you decide to purchase. But I have flyers here, and on the back of this flyer is the order form. Also be available at City Hall Public Works Department, and it'll be available on the City of Northport website. So the deadline for this is May thirty-first. And I'll be available after the meeting if you have any questions.
Thank you, Brooke. Item thirteen is public comment. We have two citizens sign to speak. The first one is Carolyn Street. Ms. Street, thank you for coming to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carolyn Street. I live at seventeen oh-two twenty-seventh street in Northport. Okay, my concerns are my neighborhood. I have some apartments right next door to me. They have a problem with their garbage. It ends up in my yard most of the time. I would like to have that garbage moved further down the lot, away from my lot. I have a chain-linked fence that separates my lot from those gray townhouse apartments, and they put it right up next to my property line. That gets to be very, very concerning to me, because when it's windy, guess what happens? All that garbage winds up in my yard. Now I'd like that addressed by City Council about moving where they put their garbage further down to the end of the lot where the apartments are. Another problem I have are the apartments that are red brick that are Northwood Manor apartments. Have you ever gone outside in your backyard and seen cops with assault rifles standing there? I have, twice, within a year. They are not doing current background checks, as far as I can tell, at those apartments. So I'm fearful for my life. Another thing I have issues with is the people that treat my street and my neighborhood like a racetrack. They run the stop signs, they floor it, their car, from the stop sign to Lurleen Wallace Boulevard. I've sat there in my yard and watched. That's my biggest concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Street.
Can I say something?
Sure, sure.
Ms. Street has called me several times, and every issue she's had, I've pretty much checked it out and made the appropriate phone calls to the right departments, or got back to them. And she's definitely got a concern, and I know, she's not the only one in that area. I think you're the organizer of the Neighborhood Watch also, and trust me, she does the watching, because I get the calls all the time. But I know Chief Burton has worked on that, and actually told me he's gonna put extra patrols some of those times. Naturally, can't do it twenty-four-seven, but, but it has been addressed, and I know, I don't guess Chief has anything different to say, but, because I know he's told me he was doing some things over there.
Well, of course, when we show up, the speeding stops. So that, we can work that area a little bit more to try and help you out with that. As far as the apartments, we can't manage what the apartments, you know, what kind of criteria they use for their residents. But we can, we can definitely extra patrol, and if we see any violations, we can take action on that.
Thank you, Ms. Street. Second citizen is Mr. Stephen Schwab. Mr. Schwab, good to see you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Stephen Schwab, twenty-five twenty-fifth street, Northport. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you briefly about traffic in downtown Northport, and traffic congestion, and problems with signage. The first place I'd like to talk about is the, what looks like an alleyway between the back of Billy's Restaurant and Mary's Cakes and Pastries. It's not an alleyway, it's an avenue. It's Twenty-second Avenue. But frequently, cars or vehicles are parked illegally on both sides of that thoroughfare. And the other day, I was coming out of Mary's Cakes and Pastries, and I saw, I'm afraid of a rather typical congestion situation where there was a very large truck trying to navigate its way through that thoroughfare and couldn't do it. And behind it was a very small delivery truck that was also trying to proceed. So the FedEx large truck decided it had to back up. When it started to back up, the little delivery truck behind it, the driver began to honk. So I, watching this situation, went back, interseated. I went back to the little delivery truck, and I said, "You're going to have to back up because the FedEx truck can't get through because cars are parked illegally on both sides of this thoroughfare." Whereupon, of course, the fellow backed up, went, turned around, went another way, and the FedEx truck was able to back up. At that point, I called the Northport Police Department and suggested that a policeman come out and ticket and possibly tow those vehicles. But we need to make the signage, some of the signage is faded. We need to make the signage very clear that you can't park there, and also enforce the laws that are on the books so that these situations don't happen all the time. The second place is of even more personal interest to me. Quite frequently, when I'm going over to the university, I sort of go the back way, and I go, make my way from my side street, which is Twenty-sixth Avenue, I live at the corner of Fifth Street and Twenty-sixth, and I go up to Ninth Street, I turn right, I go over to Main, and I try to turn left. Now I should be able to do that safely. But frequently, I can't do it safely, because despite the fact that there are faded hatch marks in front of what used to be the Yellow Hammer Framing Shop, and is I think now called the Vinyl House, there is almost always a car that is parked, that is blocking or preventing visibility for anybody trying to turn left onto Main. And so I've been almost T-boned, or side-swiped, or whatever you wanna call it, broadsided, just by trying to get out into the street far enough so that I can see when I can make a left turn. So my point is that I think we need to repaint a number of these places where there is no parking, and we need more consistent law enforcement, either certainly ticketing and possibly towing vehicles that are parked illegally, because it's a very dangerous situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwab. I got a plan of actions, Mr. Stevens, I guess. And I know Chief is already writing some stuff down on Twenty-second Avenue. Now there are parks on Twenty-second, technically, but you're saying they're just parking illegally. So we'll get PD to look at that and get some clearer signage, that'll be out of Ms. Brooke Starnes' office. And then the repainting on Ninth Street, I do know where you're talking about. Maybe we need some clearer signage, because again, PD may not be able to be down there all the time. So clear signage on Ninth Street, restriping it. Brooke, if you're listening, we'll just look at that and get it restripped, so. Thank you, thank you for coming. Yes, sir. Item fourteen is mayor and council members' business. I'll start with Councilman Hambride, District One.
I think my two citizens said enough tonight. I appreciate it. Everybody doing a good job, police, fire, all of you, public work, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. District Two, under my business, I have none other than to say thank you to PD and our Public Works. I've really seen them out with the weather getting warmer. I'm sure we'll get a lot more, not complaints, I'll just call them concerns for weeded lots and things of that nature, but our right-of-ways are getting cut, so be patient on that one. And be patient on these weeded lots. I know we've got a limited staff and planning, so be patient with us on those. And I appreciate PD, what they do in terms of the last couple of weeks, patrolling some areas of my district. That's all I have. District Three, Councilman Sullivan.
Just real quick again, I know the kids have already gone, but what a blessing to have them and see what they've done and the work they did. It was, it was pretty neat seeing them at the, at the school and receiving this award. It's just, it meant a lot to me. I also want to thank staff. I had a neighborhood meeting, so to speak, last week dealing with an issue that goes back many, many years. Dates back to early Swan days, probably. But we were able to finally get some resolutions, some answers to some people that's been waiting for a very, very long time. Probably not the ideal situation they wanted, but having them come in and talk it over with staff... with staff and I, and just trying to work through a solution was very helpful, so I appreciate all the staff. Pretty much everybody on the wall, except for one or two, was probably here, so I appreciate y'all's time staying late for me that night. It meant a lot, and I can't wait to get that issue taken care of, hopefully, so thank you all. That's all.
District Four, Councilman Davis?
I have nothing, nothing, Mr. President.
District Five, Councilman Hogg?
Yes, I, I met with some members of the Police Department last week. I just wanted to let the citizens know, there's a lot of different things that our Police Department does for community outreach that you may or may not be aware of. For example, starting tomorrow, as a matter of fact, there is a class that is called The Equalizer, which is a women's self-defense program, and it's a free class. There is a fee of ten dollars, that's besides the free class. The ten dollars just goes to help pay for the ammunition for one Saturday out of this class that the participants will use at the gun range. You can sign up on leat.org, and just click on the continuing education, and you'll see the Equalizer class, or you can call the seven-five-nine-three-thousand number to sign up. It will be held at the Tuscaloosa Airport Police Academy, which is on the second floor, so things like that, I'll try to just mention that, some things that we have going on in the community that you may or may not know, but I think every woman, and this class starts from thirteen years of age up, I think every woman in Northport should probably at least look into something like that. Just probably would never use it, hope, hope you never use it, but it's a good thing to learn and to have in your arsenal in case you did, so just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Erin?
Yes, thank you. I would like to introduce our newest staff member, our city engineer, Bruce Ian Botham. He has been on board a little more than a week now, right at a week, and we are so glad to have him, and he is a longtime Northport resident, and we are so glad to have him in our, on our staff, working with us, and we look forward to a long-term relationship. Our next, my next little item is that, for those of you who did not come to the Saturday for Safe Kids Day, we certainly missed the fun day, we certainly got councilmen being dunked in the dunking booth, even though sometimes it had to be triggered, but it's worth it anyway, and I appreciate their being able to just participate and enjoy. It's really a pretty good turnout, it's been a day and all of that, it's still a good turnout, and I appreciate what they've done and the things that were here and the pride that were here, and the good things that we enjoyed, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Item fifteen is adjournment. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.